Start with the executive session.
That's correct. Mike Moss, Public Services Director. Yes, Chairman, if we could start today with qualifications of potential candidate. We'll start with ten minutes.
Ten minutes, okay. Let's do that.
Great, thank you.
Session with my chair. That's nice day outside, not too hot. Last night was a little warm for me at home.
It was a little warm for me too, no. Well, it was a very hot day, so didn't bring sweat with me. I know, I wish I did.
Yeah, that's a good thing we don't get some work done in the house after work, so it don't look long.
Actually, there is no one that did. Actually, I want to go for a walk. I like the high robot.
Yes, just does automatically, you don't have to think about it again.
Exactly.
That's cool. Have the automatic, well, what are they called? Sheep? They just move the fields. Have the automatic, what were they called sheep? They just move the fields, they put them in there when they know what can.
Actually, I like the sheep solution better.
Yeah.
Said that sheep will fertilize it in the process.
That's great. They do a lot.
Well, I'm kind of partial to sheep. My uncle raised sheep when I was four, eight, when I was a kid, so I always helped him with the sheep.
You always just gotta keep your eye on that, right? You never know what you're gonna do.
Please hurry up. Starting popping.
Oh, is it good at nights?
Yeah, she said they lost audio, and I'm trying to get it to come back. One, one, two, three, one, two.
That should do it.
Bailey, can you hear me? Bailey, can you hear me?
The board is extending the executive session for a period of five minutes until 1:46 PM.
Oh. Oh. Yeah.
Always, you have to spend.
Oh, yeah, I thought I'd be learning better than I am. Pretty much the way you watch her.
Yeah, I think we can set that. Like I said, I wanna make sure, take care of it, but I don't wanna be bent over.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, back from it. Executive session, no decisions rendered. I'll turn it back over to Public Works.
Thank you. The first agenda item we have today is a 911 agreement. A few months, I believe, six, eight, eight weeks ago, we came to you guys to talk about interlocal agreement between the county and 911 to do some tower equipment upgrade in the tune of about $123,000 was the county's portion of about a $2 million project for 911. You guys gave me the blessing to sign the interlocal. Doug Jensen and their attorney worked together to finish up the ILA, but then realized that the ILA has to be signed by the Chairman of the Board and not the Director of Public Services. So I'm here to ask today if the Chairman could sign the interlocal. The Executive Director of 911 has already signed their side of it in their board meeting in the month of June, so once we get this to them, we'll start the ordering process. It sounded like it would be ordered in August and moving forward, getting installed later this year. So I have it here in my hands, if you guys are okay. The Chairman signed it after the meeting? Okay, great, thank you. Number two I have is Cougar Restroom. We have an agreement with Pacific Core to clean the restrooms, the public restrooms at right before Cougar, they're on the right-hand side. We've been using a third-party Celix to clean those restrooms, the same company that cleans the county buildings. It was an add-on to their contract. Unfortunately, the last couple of weeks, they've had some turnover, and over the Fourth of July weekend, there was an amazing amount of traffic, of course, through the public restrooms up there, and we had a few citizen complaints over the weekend and some videos sent to me. And so I don't know if you guys have been reached out at all, and that's the reason I bring it up today. They are cleaning the day, they're supposed to be cleaning them five days a week, so we're gonna start watching that a little bit closer up there. It's getting paid through to the tourism department, but it's still underneath our window because we're the ones who signed that contract with Celix to do that work up there. So if you do get complaints, pass them on to me, but also know that it's getting cleaned five days a week, starting again today. So we're gonna do a little spot check later today at 5 o'clock, just to make sure they did get cleaned, but the videos I've seen were, is pretty bad up there. So we apologize to the public for that. Admin facade update. Savannah can help me out on this a little bit, but as you guys know, we have the staffing on the south end here, and I believe we meet with the engineer later today.
Yes, this afternoon at 4 o'clock, I'll be meeting with Etta about the project and the scope. They did provide a draft scope. I had some questions on some of their line items, and so we're meeting today to discuss that. You wanna be careful, we have these emergency situations, first and foremost, wanna make sure the area is safe. But also, that doesn't mean that it needs to be exponentially higher in cost. So we're addressing that right now, I'm not making that a consideration in fixing the building, the building we have fixed, we just wanna make sure that we're doing things the right way and transparent. So we're meeting with them, and they've always been really good in taking our considerations and improving their scope, so. So we're doing that today and then I'll probably have a better idea of the plan. Not to, you know, too much information, but, um, pretty much the scope of working includes, um, engineering, scaffolding rental, it includes an envelope specialist, it includes some ROM costs. I asked for an engineer's estimate ahead of time, uh, which they're asking to use a consultant, which is one of my questions. And so just stuff like that. It's nothing to do with the actual cost to repair the building. It's all of the extras that are going along with it. So doing some research there.
So does it involve, I mean, you're looking around the whole building?
Yes. So it's, so the scope involves the entire building, of course, focusing on the repairs first, but that would include also doing an, um, observation evaluation of the entire building. Um, the south end is actually the, you know, the, the worst, the oldest end. So it's the one with the most correct, um, need of repair. The, most of the other sides in the, um, north side are, are newer because they were in addition. Um, so they're not as in bad of shape as, as the south facing side. Uh, and we can see where they've made repairs in the past. Um, what it kind of boils down to from what I'm understanding is it's actually the backing. Um, water is intruding behind the, the stonework, which is, you know, causing issues and causing it to self off. So.
You said ROM?
Uh, rough order of magnitude, the, this rough costs or an engineer's estimate, um, is what we, what was, who's and others call it. So I pretend to be an engineer and I say engineer's estimate, but, um, Etta calls it ROM.
North parking lot update. As you know, we took out the trees and the lighting there. About a month, month and a half ago, got all the stumps ground out. Yesterday, we took out the fencing between the parking lot and the, uh, Wazoo building. Um, we're going out to bid here. We finally got the striping laid out how we want it. Uh, we'll go out to bid hopefully next week. Maybe today. Uh, we're adding more handicap stalls, uh, near the ramp. Uh, a few more for vans along the side of the Wazoo side. Uh, knowing now exactly where we're putting trees and we're putting, uh, additional lighting at. So once we got all that finalized, now we can go out to bid, hoping to still get this paid probably in the month of August, first part of September and finish that project off.
Is the little parking lot for Wazoo, is that part of this project too?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Yeah.
We talked about originally maybe combining the two and have that another exit from our parking lot, but too big of a height elevation difference between the two.
Where it goes.
Yeah, but we took the fence down and just to see where the visibility, they, uh, Wazoo is still having some people maybe camping along that back fence. And so we just wanted to expose that a little bit more and.
I was, yeah, I have, I was visiting yesterday and they, they are having a little bit of problem with people camping there. It's not so much the cap there, it's what they leave.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. As a side note, I think that, uh, I, I, as I walk around and I walk through that parking lot, having the, uh, OPD over there, it's going to help in so many ways because that would be a circus over there too, without parking lot having all that, those extra cars. So.
We agree. Yeah. It'd be additional 20 cars that we're going to try to find homeless for. That's why we're trying to work with the, the church across the street just for that reason.
Yeah.
I agree. So, um, yeah, so by the end of the, hopefully September, it'll look completely different in that north lot. And, and by then maybe our, our roof will be done also. So next week, our, the project coordinator for the roof project of this facility is out today. So I was hoping to get an update to give to you guys, but we'll do that next Wednesday.
On the roof thing, maybe this was discussed at a meeting that I wasn't here. What did we decide to do with the glass that was fractured?
Oh, gosh. Great, great question. We actually went out to bid, um, and the bid was extremely high. We only received one. I don't know if we've notified bidders yet. Um, so, um, it was very high, way above our budgeted amount, and so we're evaluating some of the changes we might need to make to that scope. Um, we went out to bid to replace all of the glass. And so it might going, be going back to just replacing the single pane for now until we can do more of a project planning on it.
And we know it's been an issue for a while because one of the respondents, I don't know if they actually, they, they're the one that bid on it or not.
A sub.
Was a sub. They said they saw this come out 20 years ago for the same roof, same skylight project. So it was an issue 20 years ago. Uh, apparently we did not fix it at that point. Uh, knowing it was leaking around there. So we know it's been leaking for decades at this point. Yeah.
We asked him if he could provide his old, like if he had it because he remembered it, but we didn't hear anything back. Ashley did, our purchasing person.
So if we just replace the panel, we're going to be dealing with it again in 20 years, is what they're saying?
Well, we have other issues around there, just not the panel, but we have leaks around that. And so I think that's what the bid was, went out 20 years ago, maybe not for the broken glass before the leak that was, the leaks that was around all those skylights. And it sounded like it probably, maybe the bid came high at that point too, 20 years ago. They just never did the project. So it got shoved to the side and now it's, it's, it's back up. It's just weird that the same company said, hey, we, we remember that one. So we have to do something to it. We can't continue to have it leak. We'll have major issues, as you know, down the road. So because we, we know that, that sky that got broke, it wasn't 20 years ago. We don't know exactly when it was, but it wasn't 20 years ago.
Oh, sure. Um, so the Milleg LED ceiling tile, I wanted to wait till all board members were here. Um, they had done that presentation, gosh, probably about a month ago now. Um, and that presentation is essentially their proposal. Um, once we get approval from the board to move forward, that's when the documentation comes from the state in the executed contract. Um, so just one other thing before I kind of list out those numbers, I also, they, um, included a letter uh, to address the wall bracing requirement for existing, uh, partition walls, because that was a topic of discussion. So I do have that letter. Do you mind passing it? Okay. Um, and, and it pretty much, in, in some says, we think we need to move forward in doing this and here's why. Um, part of it is, yes, the walls were constructed, um, kind of like a prefab wall construction back in the seventies when we had the building built. Now, in the modifications that we're making, um, it's something that we really should address. So I'll let you guys just review that.
Authority having jurisdiction? What is that?
AHJ, that's, uh, basically an inspector who comes on and he has the authority to decide if it's right or wrong.
Correct. In this case, it's the city of Kelso is our, is our authority to decide that.
In, in the, the information they gave us, this was part of it.
It was. Yes. So.
Just had a question. I remember. Yeah.
That's correct. Um, the, the price that they actually, it, it, the price did go up, um, about ninety thousand dollars from their proposal that they made to the board. And so what they had proposed a few weeks ago was 1.1 million for all in. That's their guaranteed maximum price. And in their most recent email and with the, uh, you know, what their investigation of other items that needed to be done and the inclusion of the lobby, which is the big piece, it's now 1.2. So that shouldn't be too surprising because the hundred thousand dollars essentially extra is for the lobby redo.
Yeah.
Um, and so pretty much, uh, what I'm asking for today is the authority to give a, an approval, um, for this amount. Um, and it's to execute the contract amendment when, with DES. Um, and then what I will do is provide a copy like I have in the past of that agreement to the board.
When you say the lobby, were we talking about revamping the whole thing or just replacing the lights in the lobby?
So, um, it's, it's revamping. So it's taking, yes, it's taking out the old styrofoam squares. Um, and replacing them with a, just a normal ceiling grid, normal, you know, um, lighting features. So, and all new LEDs.
And I know we talked about a couple of different options. I wanted to make sure which one we were.
Yeah, we're doing the more, um, I said, more, well, more middle ground. They did also talk about maybe having accent lighting and, you know, um, some chandeliers and we're not doing that. We're just kind of doing what you'd have in an office. New, new grids, nothing fancy. So again, uh, the request is for authority for the 1.2 is one million, two hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars. Um, to move forward with the contract agreement, in which case we'll come back to the board just for review.
And that's going to bring our total cost to what? Nine, six, one, two, about 10, eight?
Yes, approximately, but I can bring that forward too, or I can send it to you guys in an email. So you don't have to wait. I'll do that. Um, when I get back this afternoon, I will send, I'll send this and what's already been approved in a total.
And I, I, if I remember correctly, she said that she was going to try and get more money from a grant because we were actually updating the LEDs and other things. Do you, have we heard anything?
So, um, she, there's always, there's been revolving grant opportunities. We did already apply for one of the bigger ones and we did not get selected on that. Um, so I'm not aware of any new, um, grant opportunities, but once this is approved, we'll then can move forward in, in trying to secure it because now we know what we're actually doing. Before we were, here's the plan, you know, we're not approved yet. Now that we have actual authority and approval and funding, we have a better opportunity.
That's what I thought she said was that this would hopefully trigger the opportunity.
It will help. Absolutely. Yeah.
So the 1.2 covers the reinforcing the walls, doing the bracing and everything up to code.
Correct.
Today's code.
Mm-hmm.
And then also the lobby.
Yep. Yes, this is the, and this will be, it's not a change order. It's actually an amendment because we haven't started. Um, so you won't see any, this shouldn't, uh, prompt any change orders or any additional changes without your authority.
Is this going to change the timeline that we were talking about?
No.
No?
They planned for this in the timeline based off of, uh, previous conversations with the board, you guys.
I have to say in all my meetings that I've attended with Milleg, those people seem to be on top of their stuff. I'm pretty impressed with them.
Me too.
Okay. All good?
Okay. I will let them know and then I'll be back in a couple of weeks with just more paperwork.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Going back in history a little bit, in 2024, we replaced two of our 10 yard dump trucks. They were Sterling 10 yards. It's a brand that's not for sale anymore. When we replaced those, we kept those trucks around to use as parts. Uh, we've removed some doors that were banged up and other, other stirrings of that variety, um, and some of the interior dash parts. We were approached, uh, on the city of Cass Rock, why don't you purchase those from us? We did some research on these. Uh, the, they're both inoperable in one way or another, and they sell for between 10 and 15,000 dollars at an auction currently. If they were running, we may get 20 to 30. So the request was for us to sell those two trucks to the city of Cass Rock for $10,000 apiece. These have been replaced. We have used parts off of them already. And they think that they can use either two or build one good one out of them.
So. I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah.
The only question I would have is that do we, do we have to sell them based off of appraised value so that we don't get into issues with gifting public money?
It's between another government agency. There's not as many hard rules on that.
Okay.
We just pulled up Ritchie Brothers on sold auctions for that type of vehicle that were inoperable to get that range.
Cool. That's good.
I think we, as sheriff, we gave a piece of equipment to another entity. I think you're right. We're a little less restrictions if we're going from agency to agency.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Helping them out.
Great.
Yep.
Make that happen. Thank you.
And I did have one other miscellaneous item. We didn't add it on, but it, I feel like it's good news. Um, so we had come to the board quite a while ago, um, to request kind of the authority and approval to move forward with applying for an RCO grant for Riverside Park for the legacy park projects that we've been working in for a couple of years now. And we did get notice that we, um, were selected to move forward, um, which means it's about $550,000 in funding from RCO. Now, um, there is a match and so what I'm working on right now with, when Kathy gets back and with Sean is securing funding. Um, our original funding source was going to be a majority of, um, the dredge spoils sales from our Cook Ferry site, which is contracted with JL Stordahl. Um, it, little history, it's the first time we've done a contract like this where we're kind of selling dredge spoils. And so we have minimums in place, um, through the life of the contract. Uh, we did anticipate that we'd be getting a lot more, um, unless Sean has updated recent information to say otherwise. Um, and the caveat to selling dredge spoils is that it has to, I think it's in statute, is that it has to actually go, any revenue has to go towards parks. So it was a win-win. And, um, anyway, I think we're going to be short. Uh, I, I know we're going to be short based off of what we've collected so far. So we're working on other funding sources to help with our match portion of it. So.
How close are you? How close? Rough estimate?
From, we'll get about 300,000 from JL Stordahl.
What did we anticipate?
That was the minimum. So we thought it was going to be more than the minimum, but, um, so about $250,000 is what, what I'm looking for.
It's what you're looking for?
Yep. So.
So it's like a 50% match that RCO wants.
Yeah. So.
And, and then that will build this whole legacy park that you've been working on?
Yep. Um, we're getting creative, uh, with some stormwater features, looking for some, you know, um, some features that we can integrate that have to do with stormwater to help on the stormwater side of things for our permit requirements. Riverside Park is a low lying park behind the dike, you know? Um, so there's opportunities there, but we're still, I'd like to secure the, the 250,000, but it'll be 1.1 million dollar investment into that park, which will be pretty fantastic.
Is a thought having an interfund loan and gain and paying back over time from the sales of the dredge spoils?
I, that's why I'm hoping to meet with Kathy and Sean because, you know, those are all on the table, interfund loans. Um, it is a general fund. Of course, the money's hard to come by in general fund, um, departments. So we'll just, we'll be working on it. And so I hope to provide the board updates as we go. Good news, but, mm.
Well, it is good news because there was other issues over there with the sale of those lots that shouldn't have happened that.
Right. Yeah.
Might have made us not able to do anything.
Right. I mean, this, I think it's great news. It's exciting. We'll just need to come up with the funding and we weren't even sure that we would get it because of that. So this is, it's, it's good news. Um, that was my good end note.
Thanks for that.
Yeah.
You should have said we had all the funding. It would have been better.
Until I come back.
Exactly. Yeah.
I thought maybe they, you know, donate right off. I don't know. Know somebody. You can name it after somebody. I don't know.
That's all we have unless you guys have some miscellaneous items today.
Um, I don't have any, did you have, Kelly, have you had a chance to talk to her about the? Oh, good. Okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. You guys.
Thank you.
We have a workshop coming up at 2:30 with Rotary Foundation Woodland. Is that the one you need me to sign?
Do you want me to have staff scan and put it through the system?
Couple of updates. I, I went over and visited, uh, Gary Fredericks yesterday at WSU. Uh, he had asked me to come over and, uh, he was just kind of talking about the transition period. Sounds like he will be meeting with WSU and seeing how they're going to post that director position. But in the interim time, it'll be Jennifer Leach. You, we see her every so often at Board of Health. You know who she is, right? And, uh, since I said it over there, I was instructed to give him the retirement plaque. And so he was very appreciative of that. So.
Yeah. Oh, he's been there a while.
Said 30 years. Yeah, he's been there a while. I'd, uh, chatted with you previously about, uh, my conversation with Representative Wilson Camp Perez on changing. She wants to get in and change the section 120 F of the uh, Marine Mammal Protection Act. The 120 is. The 120 is the part that gives them the ability to euthanize some of the seals, and she wants to change that, wants to have a study so they can change that and make it easier than what the current process is. They, her assistant called me while on vacation and said if the Commissioners were open to a a letter supporting that or a resolution supporting that, that they would appreciate it, so. I'm bringing that back to you, because I told you that that might come to us. I am working on a draft letter, I'll make sure y'all get a chance to see that and see if it's something you want to do.
I'm on board.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll buy ammunition.
Yeah. I, I just got a question to her now, is because the one section that she's really concerned about is where they trap them and they haul them off and they euthanize, and they think there's a, a better way, a less stressful way for the.
And more cost effective, too.
Yeah. And then the last thing, we talked a little bit about it yesterday at the Tuesday meeting, and I chatted with Kelly. We want to hold a workshop on this mental health thing that the members have been asking us for. And I think it's, after talking with Kelly, I think it's probably just best at the BLCC if we do that. You guys good with that?
Yeah. I, I touched on it a little bit, I'm meeting with the Gerbo on Friday. There's a lot of money when, you know, they, one of the things that they brought up was the consolidation of all these funds. That in, verbally, that's easy to say, but we have to get the, the issue squared away between those institutions, because we're funneling money here and all these other places, so we have to peel that onion one layer at a time, and, and it's, before we can even have a conversation about a facility, that has to get fixed first. I, I just don't see any other way to do it, because we don't have money to just.
We don't have money to do it, and, and, yeah, that was part of my conversation today. I said, I can't call the state up and say, don't send it here anymore, send it over here, that's gonna go well. Yeah, so I, I agree with you, that, that's one of the big, big points, and, and I've asked Kelly, she mentioned an acquaintance that is looking at the old Charlies, and evidently they've done other facilities, and so I'd like to have a lot of different people and to give a pretty wide range on that.
I agree, especially if we can help a private facility run it, because I don't have any interest in running one.
Hallelujah, me either.
Amen.
Okay. So that's updates for me on things I've been on. Anything else?
I attended the City of Longview, Longview City Council meeting last night, and the issue came up about they returned $100,000 or whatever from the tax money they collected for recording fees, and now there, people are started shooting at, how could they get that back from the county again, and, and there was a whole lot of discussion about that, and nothing got resolved. They pointed a finger at me for sitting in the audience, but.
Well, actually, we, we have nothing to do with that, it's, it's all, it's easy, they can vote on the council that they'd like the funds raised by Longview to be sent to them again, and we'll do it.
And I, I, I didn't say anything, I wasn't gonna get in the middle of their little tiff that going on between different council members, but I can expect us to see something on that pretty soon.
Yeah.
I've seen emails on that already this morning. They're like, are you guys discussing this? I don't see it on your agenda, and I said, well, if it's being discussed with Commissioners, it's being discussed individually, it's not, we haven't had a meeting on it or discussed at all, so.
The, the prior Commissioners, we didn't, whatever Longview wants, we'll, we'll do it, I don't care, and I don't think it's any different here. I think you, you guys probably don't care if it goes direct to them or it comes to us, it's, it's their decision.
Yeah.
Yeah. With the bad arm and everything, you went there? Yeah. And you're tough. Okay, we got a few minutes before 2:30, we'll just take a recess and then fire back up at 2:30.
How'd you know? Yeah, exactly.
Just cast it in reed. Spoon or spinner, I don't know, I was just, I was casting two thirds way across the river. You know, just cast it in the reed. And then apparently, where you explained it to me, it's like, you know, if you're gonna drive a nail, you can do it once with a three-pound sledgehammer and put the whole nail in, but you can still take a little kid's hammer and sit, if you sit there long enough, you can tap it into the, you know, you can drive it through. Well, I'm sitting there, he said, it's all that repetitive motion, he just kept doing it, kept doing it, kept doing it. And ultimately, it weakened that until it fractured, so.
You gotta be careful now, jeez.
I'm gonna sling for a month. Keep my elbow at waist level, don't, don't pull it away from my body, and that, that's literally, if I try to move my elbow out or move it forward or backwards, tells me damn quick that it's broke.
We're gonna see it back on the sling again.
Well, it's because when they redesigned their shoulder where they had to reattach.
So.
Good morning, commissioners. Thanks for letting us be here. My name is Lynn Jensen and I'm one of the representatives.
Make sure the little green light is on, so.
Commissioners, can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Lynn Jensen, one of the representatives of Rotary of Woodland. Officially friends of Rotary, not on the board or anything like that, just supporting this great work. And I'm here with these wonderful women. I'll let them introduce themselves. Sandy, Sandy Larson. And we are here to present a project that we've been working on, that we've had support from the county in the past, which is a Scott Hill Park and Sports Complex. This has been work that's been underway for roughly the last 10 years. And we are continuing this great work and trying to get this park built for the communities within Calitz County, Clark County, and other surrounding representing counties that could support this park. It's been a three-phase project. We are almost complete with phase one. But I wanted to, maybe we'll start with the video, which will give a better overview of what this project's scope is, and then we'll get more in details with the ask here. So I'll start this. Well, that was an overview. That was an overview of the project, showing the work on phase one of the projects. That includes a multi-use sports-filled grass that's been completed for soccer, football, softball, and baseball. Now, with phase one, that also includes a parking lot that's completed. It's completed with being paved and striped. But parts of that phase one still to be completed are a bus and RV parking for travelers and a trailhead parking lot. That will be also part of a trail that will be existing around the entire park. So this great work, as we are trying to wrap up phase one with funds that are already in the works of trying to get elsewhere, we are trying to kick off phase two of this project. And so our request is coming, and I want to introduce Darlene to actually formally make this request by to prep and prepare for turf of the first of three soccer fields that will be on phase two and the parking lot of that phase two. So Darlene, do you want to take over from here? You want me to?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that sounds good. I'll present this image here where it's showing. This first section right here is that phase one that's complete for the most part outside of those things I've called out. And phase two consists of these three soccer fields right here. And additional parking lot, that's right here. This parking lot's complete on this side. And with that, it will require, in working with EB Engineering and bids, $792,696 to be able to prep this site, to be able to lay one soccer field, full-size soccer field turf for this location. Now, we have already acquired or in process of acquiring a turf field to place after this work's complete, which has us anxious to start with one field because we have the turf, but look to submit grants for the remaining fields beginning Q1 next year from the state of Washington. So that is our ask and request of this, this project that's been underway for some time and why we come to the commissioners for funds to help us kickstart our second phase of this project. Anything to add?
Oh, okay. So there's a lot of pieces to this project. One of them that really is beneficial to the whole community, not just ballplayers, is there's a 10-foot-wide paved walking trail all the way around the park. This park is a 46-acre park. It's on top of a hill. And so you see this road here goes down to the bottom of the hill where there's homes down there. This gives them access to come up because this is part of a program for, come on, for kids to play, you know, you know, I'm sorry. Anyway, this takes, gives them opportunities to come up to the park. This is the entrance from the rest of the area. And so that way, it's, it's a safe thing. There, of course, down the road, there'll be a lot of different things to be taken care of as far as, you know, like custom security and that type of thing, you know, they'll come later. But we're, we're working on just getting it developed right now. So that's the big thing. So what you see, this here, about right in here is where the trail starts. And so right now, we do have a trail, paved trail down and around. This is a covered shelter where you can have different events if you'd like. And being this is a multi-use field, you know, there's things that you can do on this that are okay, you know, as far as the different games and stuff. And even if you were having concerts or something like that, you can be on this grass field where all the rest of these will be artificial. And, you know, you can't just go hang out on artificial tier, field. It's got to be, you know, taken care of. So yes, and all the fields are made regulation size so that you can actually play soccer, lacrosse, football. So they're not just, just not just for soccer. So that soccer is a big thing right now in the area, but there's all these other ones too that we've had comments about, you know, wanting to know if you could do that or not. And these here are two larger fields, baseball. There's a concession stand, two-story concession stand so that you could be up top looking or down underneath, you know, having dinner or whatever. Entrance two, every spot has a restroom. So there's three restrooms, three or four restrooms. 450 parking spaces throughout the park. The engineer did a really great job about parking here, parking there, parking there. As you can see, these are parking lots. This is a large 500 square, or 5,000 square foot building, which covered, has a, will have a small kitchen and storage room. So like if you wanted to have a big family party there, bring them on over. You got the parking lot, you got all the stuff you need there. And it also is usable for pickleball, basketball, you know, it's, it's going to be multi-use. It's not just one thing or another. And that's the whole thing that's so beautiful about this park is that everybody can use it. I mean, I have, my dad was down in the nursing home for quite a while, a few years back, and they had to take their residents out of the building and go to Kalama to actually go for a walk on flat turf. Now, this will be flat all the way around. And so kids, parents, elderly, wheelchairs, help, you know, she could go out there and walk the whole thing if she wanted, you know, I mean, it's that, it's going to be that smooth and, and smooth and flat. Anyway, I get, I get so excited, I can't even hardly talk, so please excuse me. Because this is so, such a big project and we've been working on it for so long and I'm not any big hot shot. I'm just one of the many of the team. And it just so happened that when it started, I was one of them that was, I'd already retired from my jobs. I was 35 years hairdresser. So I was getting more of this stuff, working with the engineer. My husband told me that this engineer was the best. We'd had an earlier one and it wasn't going well. And then we got RB Engineering out of Centralia, Srihalas, and it, he's just taking care of us. And he understands this kind of stuff. So he's not in a big sweat to get this thing done, so get out of my hair. No, not at all. He understands that it takes time and it takes a lot of money. And it's taken time to get money because of all the people that were looking for it in other places. And unfortunately, that took us down a little bit. But the president at the time was very adamant about making sure that this project was sustainable, feasible, and we were going to be okay. You know, it's not just something, oh, you're never going to run up there and do that. No. We studied and we had to raise the money to make the study and then find out, okay, that worked. Now we got to do it some more. And so it's been a long journey. But we didn't start getting, Darlene is the, is the queen of grants at the state, at, at the district, wherever. You know, she, she has a knack there, that girl. And so she's gotten a lot of grants for us along the way, which has helped. And like you said, that this is complete now. The parking lot, the building here, this is the maintenance building with restrooms, all done, just waiting. And then, so this is those two, like you said, that are in process right now. And then, of course, this would be the, the soccer field. And the thing about the soccer fields here, we have to do this parking lot first. It's a must because of the way the land is. You know, it looks flat, but it's not. I mean, it is, but there's some things. And so parking lot goes first, then you could do this turf field, I mean, yeah, turf field. You could do the, the underneath work, you know, all the earthwork. And then also, I was told by the engineers that in the process of this, because of the way it lands and lies and what's in it, that by the time they get this done, these two here will be well on their way for, you know, roughed in next, next two phases. I mean, because that's, that's where we're headed. You know, we like to do it in phases so we have it all complete. So there's just a lot of, a lot of, a lot of mechanics to this. But it's been so exciting and, and I cry every time I see that picture on those videos because it's, it's been so amazing to go up there and see that. I mean, when they were digging holes in there and everything, and I thought the land was flat like this. And then all of a sudden, they're out there digging these ginormous holes with those big, with the big, you guys have all the big equipment. And it would, it would just blow my mind, you know? My, my husband's a builder, but he builds houses, you know, do a little foundation work and then you go up, you know, but no, this was just digging and big hills, all kinds of stuff. But that's what it took to get it worked up so that they could, you know, get the pipes in. And you saw the picture of all the, this is, this is natural grass, so it's got all kinds of pipes in there for the irrigation. And of course, this will be different there. It won't, it won't be irrigated. But it's just, there's so much more that I could talk about, but it's, it's basically, I hope, if you have questions, maybe I can answer. But it is just an amazing, amazing project. And the thing that I'm really excited about is that I have lived in Woodland all my life. And I hate to admit it, but I am 75 years old. And my mom was going to give me swimming lessons in the swimming pool when I was a child. We don't have a swimming pool. That was tried a couple of different times, didn't work. There was a couple of other things. And the horseshoe lake at that time was too bad to swim in. You know, she wouldn't let us swim in there because they got seaweed, people drowned and, you know. So there's always been this, where do kids go? This is the thing that really got me as a kid growing up. I was working with my aunt. My aunt and uncle had a chicken ranch. My uncle was blind. And so I started working with them when I was 10. And so I'd go to around town and meet people and I, you know. So they knew me, but why did I say that? Because there was nothing for the kids. When we got to be teenagers, we either went down to the Columbia or up on the hills. And everybody got in trouble. And, you know, it wasn't good stuff. And so this why, this is why I'm just so passionate about this park. Because our community still doesn't have a park like this. And the beauty of this park, as it's been developed, is it's there for everybody, not just the kids. It's the young people, the old people, everybody. And so this is really, the other thing that's impressive is that when we started, of course, Darlene, you know, she's telling me to call, whatever, was Ed Orkut asked, where is the money going to come from? You know, is it just going to be like from Kalama or Reteal or Los Center? And so I thought, well, I guess I have to find out. And so I started calling and people are going to come from everywhere. And of course, now we already know they're coming from everywhere. But at that time, we didn't know that. And he started, because he said if it came outside the state, then it would be feasible. And he started, cause he said if it came outside the state, then it would be feasible because it was outside money, not just, you know, back and forth at Richfield, Little Center. So that has been phenomenal. And that's really helped in that sense to be mindful like that. Because when we went through all the stages of the, the tests, or the, this, you know, the feasibility, you know, sustainability, uh, figuring out the amount of time and money that it's going to take and what would come in, then it starts making a whole lot of sense that it's not just recreation for a couple of kids. It's, it's going to be bigger than us. And that's what Ed wanted to hear. That it was going to come from outside the state. They come from Florida, Hawaii, Canada, New York. I mean, we have kids in Woodland right now that are playing in New York a lot of the time, you know, at least once a year. So this is, this is something where we could have things like that, where we don't have it in Woodland. And that's the problem. Woodland doesn't have it. Richfield has it, Longview has it, but I don't even know if theirs is this, this old school.
There's nothing like that in Calhoun County, I can tell you that right now.
Exactly, exactly. And that's why it's so important. Because you would know people that probably would really enjoy it, coming down here and just spending the day, walk around, do it, whatever. Have games. Cause it's, there's going to be very usable because it's all artificial, except for this. And then if you wanted to have a concert, that's another thing that you could do in this because it's natural. Where you wouldn't have people out playing on the turf. That, that, that's a no-no for those kind of. But, but, but just think about the amount of people that could come play games because you can play all the time. Where the natural, that's, you know, that's a different thing. But there's use for all of it. So anyway, I, I can talk for hours. You know, Darlene wants to talk. So, um, if there's any questions that I could answer that you think you have right now.
What's your target date for completion of a phase two? When are you hoping to have it done?
Well, what would you say, Dar?
Phase two, yes. Phase one we're hoping to do this year. Phase two, we're just nibbling in the phase two.
Okay.
We really don't have.
Do you have a target date to complete phase one?
Yeah.
We sent her closer, man.
I could share that, um, we're needing roughly 544,000 to complete phase one. And we have grants, uh, we're applying for, for those separate to this one. That will help us finish sidewalks, lighting, parking, the separate parking lots I referenced. And if we can get that, we could get this done before the end of the year. Our hope, and I'd say it would be spring. So by spring as sports and the weather's getting better, phase one will be completed and ready to use for the public.
Grants, is that like through RCW?
Yes.
Or RCO?
Also Calhoun County Indian Tri- or Calhoun County Tribe. We've applied for grants with them just recently too.
Who, who, uh, does Rotary Foundation Woodland or are they the ones that maintain this? Or has it become part of the city, a day separate?
The city of, of Woodland owns the land, but have an agreement for Rotary to develop it and maintain it.
And maintain it.
And there's a foundation that's being developed, that's set up, that will be managing the property ongoing, not the city.
Who, the gener- the revenue that's generated from this, where does it go? Cause I would imagine you're going to hold tournaments and charge and that kind of stuff.
It will be a whole separate entity, so it's taking care of itself. So the, the money that comes in is what they're going to use.
That's the sustainability part of it.
You know, it, and I'm, I know Dar, so I'm sure she's gotten some money out of the state and, and the feds probably. Have you got anything from them? I know it's, you're good. We'll make it work.
We've gotten just under $3 million from the state and recently have got that from the state. Sandy kind of alluded to, but it's a good investment from the state, just as it is for Calhoun County. And it's a good investment because in our research, much of the money that would, um, and via our hotels, by doing stuff, is coming from outside the state. Now, for the state, it's real important that it comes from, and, uh, or in, you know, other areas. And the study proved that, that with Calhoun County. You barely seldom have a thing dropped, at least I haven't seen two of them that have dropped for you. Where you chop and check off, hold them one box. Your, your job, I think, is to do things to help the citizen, of which you don't know it. What's a good part of Calhoun County? Sometimes we feel left out, but it is part of Calhoun County. And this would be a huge thing for them. But let's look at the investment side. You'll make more money off this than you don't make for it, just because of the sales tax and stuff. It's been generated, hotel, motel tax, it's going to be generated when we become fully operational. But even in the meantime, we're, there's people that have done, they're looking for places to stay. And it's really nice that they, the Chamber of Commerce directs them to places within Woodland. So it's, you know, when you get to check two boxes, then we're very close to being able to open the park for, with phase one, because we haven't been able to. And first it was handicap parking and I mean, there's a litany of things you have to do. And if we get the money to be able to complete phase one, I'm the one that put in the soccer field for phase two because I figure you guys are rich enough to do it. But if you wanted to do, you can, it has phase one, five and 15 bucks. Then we can open them and start having, probably not big tournaments, but
Oh, activities.
Yeah, just activities.
People need to get to see it, they need to see it.
Yeah.
And, and we, we have felt for a long time, if we have it open where people can actually go and enjoy them, we'll get more donations. Cause every time we have an event where we show it to people, we get more donations. We get more, uh, golden, yeah. And you know, it's because they're able to see what's happening. But here, we, I, it's just such a good thing for the county because being bringing people to buy things than how it's so financially, you're, you're looking at the finances down, which is an account I kind of enjoy to do. And then you're looking at the people to pay more tax. But it would be very beneficial financially and you'd be given Woodland something that Woodland hasn't had. That you, that Sandy said, really, I think she forgot when my kids were there, the big places that Congress gave was the Safeway parking lot. You know, that's what they have in Woodland. And so it'd be nice to have something such a jewel as this for the people. And then where it's actually going to make them too.
You know, it reminds me a lot of, uh, Ridgefield's complex with the ball fields and the, and the stuff, but in the soccer fields, uh, by the deal. Any idea how they financed that down there? Was it just, just curious? Cause it looked, th- they did it through, uh, taxes, tax proposal on.
The tribe also donated a significant amount to that construction, but this, you're right. This, the size of this, this sports complex would rival and compete with Ridgefield.
Absolutely.
But, yeah, and my point for that is I've been down to the Ridgefield, multiple baseball tournaments. They do all, it's busy all the time. I, I would guess you're going to see the same thing here.
And, and you'll see that that was built before and while that growth was happening over there too. And that's why I got involved actually with this work is because I have five kids all in that, I'm taking to Ridgefield twice a week, sometimes more because of practices out there. Cause we can't practice in Woodland either, because we don't have the facilities to accommodate the region in Kalama, Woodland. So we are naturally having to go out of Calhoun and Woodland. Um, and what does that mean, right? We will only shop at Costco now. We will only shop at the others, uh, uh, or go out to eat those locations. It's, it's just, that's what this brings is all the sporting events on the weekends, all the practices are in the weeks is, it doesn't just bring it for those individual events and what Darlene's talking to. That's what brings additional revenue and services to the community.
And, and I'm not doubting that at all. And by the way, in Ridgefield, you know how many people are waiting for the cover to come off the In-N-Out sign? Do you know, uh, the complex in Ridgefield is by the school there? Do you know if they are able to, huh? That's what I was, I was wondering. It, was there involvement from the school or, or the port down there too? Have you explored it? I, yeah. Or do they have their own field? I, I, okay.
They, and the high school has a nice field. They, they got a nice.
Woodland does?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a pretty good looking.
It's not used for any tournament, things like that.
I know the High, Ridgefield High School plays at the Complex in Ridgefield and I just.
And they also have, which we haven't explored, I don't know if we'd go there, but they have their, um, minor professional baseball team there.
Yeah.
And that could be something to draw. I don't know if we could ever go that route. I don't think that's the intent.
Well.
I don't know. I know a lot that's been asked, but there was a veteran team that wanted to, much more, there was a football team that wanted to actually play in Woodland. And Carol and I went to city council. You know, I said, school, have school room, um, to allow them to use the field. And we were denied. And at that time they were doing a study on how much football actually helps veterans with years and PTSD because of the camaraderie and camaraderie and the giving, the physical. But still we were denied. I don't know if any of the fields would be good for football. Oh, you're not better. They're all, they, they were, I understand they would be good for anything. And that's the, actually the, the veterans never did get placed here in this area of play. And that would be another thing that would be nice. And I'll tell you that brings huge, you know? These people watch.
Think one big call out to is the si- vast size of this location. It's not down on the natural, um, ground level of City of Woodland. It is sitting up and it's a very large space. And easily could become a natural disaster meeting location for people. Uh, it could, it could accommodate tens of thousands potentially at that space as a meeting location for the city, as well as like you had said, events, large events that could happen up at that space too. Just because it sits actually so high and it's incredible. I was shocked by that too, is even though it's sitting up on the hill, how flat the whole space is. It's not like a baseball field's up here. It's like, uh, Sandy said, uh, that trail that's going around, it is a flat space up there.
Do you know what the elevation is?
Stress of funds, uh, using that, uh, that they will use the school buses in order to attack the nursing home.
Yeah. So bring it up there.
So it makes America, that would be available in case of the disaster would even.
Elevation's around 300 to 500 feet.
Woodland, and at that point, uh, we were living on the Lewis River Road. And I had home in life basically. And, um, it got flooded. But it was flooded for quite a while and we had like five feet, we had to do what's, there was like five feet of water, it was for weed. And that was one of the reasons that in this project, before we came onto it, they had taken 13 feet of fill off the top of that mountain, or whatever, what he's talking about. And taking it down below and raised up kind of hills, not flooding at all after, just spots where they could put houses in there that wouldn't get flooded. So that came after. And so that's why it almost feels like you're in a bowl. Because you know, you've got, it's not really like this, but, but the, it's just different. And so it does come also with the sounding. But the fact is when it, it did actually happen to us, I mean, we were flooded. And so it does happen, it was a freak thing, but it was there and a lot of people had to leave their home. And it was, it was, this is a way, has a way out than up, up that hill, which would be helpful. And, uh, you just never know. And hopefully we never have to hit. I don't know about the woods or what, but we had.
We have tried to, uh, I, we come down more often. I do know the history of planners' days now, after being down there, that it all started with the diking and, and celebration, because you weren't flooding. So, Don, you had a question? Yeah?
Yes, yes. Okay. And then, um, Comley Roads are in and out. Is Button Club Road the only road in and out of the area?
No, there's a.
Here, you can give her this if you'd like. That's a smaller version of it.
There's a road in?
There's one road, Scott Hill Park Road, that comes straight in, right in front of the police station that takes you up the hill there. And then there's a road that could be put, that's prepared to go into the neighborhood, um, off the other side of the hill. Now, the, the city's potentially requested to put an additional road with housing. They're putting planned in front of the park. But there's been concerns brought up of, of making this space feel safe as well for, if they were, heaven forbid, of, of an abduction, that you couldn't have a quick getaway. So potentially having two roads in and out, but there could easily be more if necessary. But I think Darlene knows more about the history of that than I do.
Very, so we have a loss. You should, you have a win, win, win. In this case, we have three wins and I can't see a loss. And beyond the line to, since I've been involved and, and we've had answers about every question imaginable. When we get our legislators, we got both Peter Ovano and, uh, Arquette and Senator Brown, all supporting this project. Well, if you don't think they've asked every question that is possible. And so I don't know if we've answered them all, but they feel, and they wouldn't have given us right under $3 million already on this project and we're still vying for more. But they wouldn't have given us even the amount to begin with if they didn't think it was a win. And the third one, I don't think we even thought of until right now, with a place where people could be exacted to. Because now we thought about it, but I never told them, but not that, because I didn't think about the winner as a question. But if it makes money for the state, certainly going to make money for the county. So that helps you financially, which is a win. And it's something that was really needed in this end of the county and something we haven't had. And if we could get at least enough to finish the first phase, that would be awesome. And if you're feeling a little more generous, they have to give us enough to do that.
So those numbers, 550 for completion of the first phase and roughly 793,000 for kickstarting the second phase.
We're going to be, when we can say yes, because all our life, there's been this or that. It, that never happened. It never, it never happens in Woodland. I mean, that was just the, the, the slogan for a long time. And so, and I know they, they don't think it's happening because they can't see it. So they think we're just wishful thinking, I guess. And so the fact that one of these days, we're going to be able to open up and say, come on up and have a look, you know? Um very exciting, very exciting. They got to actually see it and then I vision community is gonna come along. And right now, it's like, oh, yeah, well, that's new crap. My kids already. Soccer. Baseball is not gonna happen, you know?
Is there just three phases to this?
Yes.
So the after phase two with the soccer fields, all the rest of it would be complete in phase three?
Correct.
She said it's a lot. At one. Every time. But every time we had them, we get more donations, but the fence can't be big because it's not open. You could give it.
Yeah.
First stage, we can add. The things happen. It's a huge, huge step forward for us.
Okay. I I know we've given in the in the past.
Three hundred thousand is what we've received.
Yeah.
Amazing, that's. I don't know, we all know that we had a bid and they hadn't included the sales staffs on the. And our engineers had to. And so all we had had to work on and couldn't pay for it all. And within a week, you guys came to our rescue.
Well, that would have been Chairman Dahl, not Steve and I. We won't take credit for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All an arm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was mainly on her. And my.
It yeah. Yeah. I. What I could tell you is, you know, we certainly could look at this, I don't even know what funds we have available, we'll be real honest with you. Uh I'd have to check with with Kathy like we did last time, but. I don't think any of us have a problem looking at this and seeing what's what's out there.
That's actually, it's pretty, that's a pretty impressive complex. That really is, that's a pretty impressive complex. It is.
That is.
Yeah.
I mean, one of the.
Yeah.
Yeah. Don, you have some?
Is there any way for more cars coming in from the other side? If if Merryweather Lane is just going to be. Seasonal or. It's a lot of traffic for Scott Hill.
I think we'll absolutely get a sense when phase one opens. To have the flexibility to make that decision of how much more traffic. There's easily access for two additional roads into it. But it's. Right. They actually have already started to build a road up. The baseball field side at the bottom of the hill, if you're familiar with the baseball side. To put houses in that get will attach could attach to the park. It's just we don't necessarily. We just want to make sure uh. It's it's a safety, we keep things focused, but.
It's only three minutes from the park to the briefing, so you're a member of kids that you know, that's one thing we.
Which is a one up from Ridgefield too, which it's more like. Eight to ten minutes from the freeway and we are literally right off the freeway.
Especially with the construction they got going.
Yeah.
They did say uh.
About safety?
About the about the use of the time, we we did a study for the uh traffic. It's been a little while, but but the idea was that we would have. Your your. High high traffic, you wouldn't want me wanting to open up a game at that time, then you wouldn't have a track. But other than that, you can go up and down there and it's not that big of a deal, it's not that, so you're not thinking any pushback from the people you deal with right in that. Not now, of course, we don't have to get that, but when when you when you're out cruising around. You know, the port of port of five hour is just jammed, I mean, it's back to back to back, not anything, what the heck? And yet. After that rush hour, then it's no big deal.
And I would imagine most of yours are gonna be on the weekends, exactly.
They now do a traffic study.
Yeah, we did.
In the future. Those that were needed in the town. They're in the overall. In the first phase, it's this. But there are more.
How many? How many different sports? I mean, I'm looking right there and there's I can count like eleven different sports that you can play in that complex. On the turf fields and on the. Uh so because of that, though, I mean, it could potentially, that that's an all year long complex that you can use.
Yeah.
Through the winter, through everything, all seasons.
Set up a foundation to manage it. Because it is a all year long thing. Some of it was out there soliciting tournaments and. Keeping it maintained and keeping the park in good shape.
The one thing that I I agree with you on the revenue, on bringing people and attracting to them. The one thing that I agree with you on, and I think it's even it's even more important is. The intangible that it brings to the kids. And giving them something positive to do, that's a family. Um you know, kids, most of the time, they're gonna go to these tournaments with their families and. Um that's important, that's an intangible, those kids are. You know? Yeah, it it really is. And I I I have found that those types of things that that bring families together are better for for our society and it's better for the kids. Um and it's pretty, it that's it's pretty impressive because. I've been to a lot of those with my kids and that one right there, I would say would rival anyone I've been to. Uh that's a pretty impressive. Complex right there. Good for you guys for taking the bull by the horns and initiating that too, because it's been talked about. For a very long time that we've needed something like that in Cowles County. Um in our area, because. All of our sports teams are all are, you know, my son's all star team right now, they're traveling all over Oregon, Idaho. Because we don't have anything like that here, we can't have those types of of events. In our county and so we're traveling all over the place, you know, to do to go to those things, so. The fact that you guys have initiated this and gotten into this point is pretty impressive, good for you. And I think you're right, the entire county would benefit from something like that.
Maybe people up there, it's gonna. Who will be hustled.
When you say that, the club took a huge leap of faith. My starvingness and this last year, we got an award. From the what it's called. Anyway, it's it's a very international award for a club, a rotary. Came to the Woodland Rotary Club because of Scott. And the size and everything, so. So we just want, how this can be right up there.
Lynn. Uh you talked about. On this five fifty, you you currently have stuff in to RCO for that? Or you're applying?
So we are requesting from Cowlets Tribe three hundred thousand one hundred and fifty over the course of the next two years to help us complete the trailhead. We are trying to make a. The a a connection with the tribe. And uh the work of the trailhead. Uh potentially a monument, a small monument for the the tribe there for the trailhead. Um and then just have that connection, so that trailhead parking lot. Which is at the entrance, that's what we're asking uh those funds for for them. Now, the five hundred and fifty would be for the. There's another layer of asphalt that needs to go up Scott Hill Park Road that needs to be added. Right now, you'll just see like the drainage systems poking out of this asphalt, it just needs another layer in completion. And gravel right in front of the water, storage locations. It needs sidewalks on the road coming in, the the streets all paved and curbed, but need sidewalks on the on the. And that those sides coming in. The lights, the trees added to separate the homes that are up there from the park, so we're not disturbing them. And the RV parking location right there for overnight potential campers.
And you don't? You don't have anything in for a source for that right now?
Correct.
Okay, okay, that's.
We have some funds already uh reserved to help us with this, but uh not the. That five fifty is what we'd need in addition to what we have to complete the phase one.
Then phase two is the seven ninety ninety-three.
Yep. And and.
Well, I. Having worked with RCO, they might be more open to when you're actually putting a field in versus paving something, I guess. Is is all I would say on that. I'll ask this question, and I don't know if it's been explored, but you know, sometimes. Communities, if they get behind it, they're not opposed to paying a one tenth, one percent that goes to goes to parks. And I know. Carol sits on that, I don't know if the city has ever entertained that or. Thought that that would be something that the citizens would want, I'm just trying to think of ways to maybe maybe move this a little faster.
We have a new rotaryian that's in the group that moved out from Portland. And she worked on um getting some fills around the Portland area. Anyway, they had uh contacts with Nike and Adidas.
Okay.
They got a lot of funding from those. And so she kind of worked on that aspect of getting some information for us to go to maybe Adidas or. One of the bigger companies to get some funding from them also.
Got you, perfect, okay.
And we are planning on to apply, I think those open up Q one next year, we've passed this year's. Opportunity, um but I've already been in contact with the city of. Woodland representatives who helped potentially in the past and they're fully supportive, they wanted to help us, I think we'll try to do this on our own. Um but that's our intent, we're absolutely gonna ask for more to help speed this process along for phase two.
Yeah, okay.
It'd be nice if the district would be. School district rather than just the city. That's mostly with the city passing intact. Because a lot of people live outside of the city and. That would be using probably more live outside of the city with kids than within.
Yeah, and.
Difficult else we could. Something that the district of the school.
Yeah. I agree with you, Dar, that's kind of why. Brought up Ridgefield because I think they were able to tie with the school a little bit and it makes it makes it easier.
One thing we, I think most of it. I agree. Yeah, I'm all about that, so this is why we didn't want the school to have control. Of this park, we wanted it set. And really, I think it's also true, we didn't want the city city to have that. That was the whole idea of that. We set out this park's foundation.
Uh I don't disagree with that either. Yeah.
Yeah, you know, Rick, you brought up something that triggered something in my mind with regards to. Uh are talking about Nike and and those places. When I was looking at doing a ropes course uh for the kids and coming up with the money. We went and talked to businesses and what we told them was. If you would donate the money to build this specific element. We would name that element after you as like a marketing thing and you've got enough fields there that you could probably hit up some businesses and say, hey? If you donate X amount to this field, we'll have a permanent sign up there or something, you know, to. That the company would be interested in donating uh some money for advertising.
So far, we've gotten about uh from what I'm looking at, local donations around six hundred thousand. So we these they have been fantastic of asking around uh some with twenty thousand dollar donations already. But absolutely, I think there's opportunity there.
Is that throughout the county or just in Woodland?
Woodland.
Yeah, I mean, I I would say go to the Port of Kalana, Port of Longview to the businesses within the county, because we're all gonna benefit from something like that.
Yep. Okay. I uh. I can't give you a concrete. We can't give you a concrete answer right here, but what I can will tell you is. I'll sit down and we'll see what we even have available and and make sure that it gets on a discussion point and see what we can do.
Thank you.
We'll do that.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, hey, we thank appreciate your 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 time today. Yeah?
Yeah, the movie fan. I'm sure we put out some cards so that see if it's something you're interested in. Happens in October, like Summer Row Lodge in Ridgefield.
Okay.
And we have. We're moving a lot of lots of people. Silent and dinner. And again, it's just a place for us, the the owners of the building. Um Margaret Heffler, I don't know if any of you have ever heard of her. But she bought this lodge over there in in Center. And it was the it was the lodge that's on the old old highway. You know, all the way out where you had to go buy this lodge. Anyway, she bought it and um boys, we we did it, fixed it up and so that's. Because she was a she was one of the first all in people to do this and so she was really. Really adamant about it, she knew it was a great deal.
Yeah.
So we just, that's our place we go to because of Margaret. And we haven't gone to anywhere else just because, you know, we're not big enough to go anywhere else anyway, this is just what we do and. And it's 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 a nice event and it helps with our funding as well, so.
Yeah.
It's that, just give it out for, and I don't know if any of you have ever seen our newsletters, we had sent out newsletters, actual newsletters to go to every house in there. It's been a while now, another year, I guess it's passed since we did the last one, but. It was it was really good too, you know, because we always got donations when we sent it all.
Yeah. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thanks very much for your time.
Oh, we appreciate your time, yeah. Okay. Anything else? We will adjourn, thank you.